41 minutes.
Green light, green light. Here we go.
Okay, it is September 24th, 2024, and this is a meeting of the Kerrville City Council. I'm calling it to order at 6:00 PM. And at this time, if Councilmember Seigerman will lead us in the indication and the pledge.
If you'll pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask special prayers tonight for our mayor, who is having some health issues. Be with him and bring him to a quick recovery so he can come back and be our leader. And be with all of those who might be in the Peterson Hospital tonight, and that they would have answers to their questions and a remedy to whatever's ailing them. And tonight, be with us as we gather and talk about important things about our city, that we can have some resolve, and folks will leave with the things they need, the answers, and a decision that pleases and is best for Kerrville. Be with our first responders, bless them every day and keep them safe. Also, keep those who protect this country outside of our borders. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the other holy religious fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stuart, announcements?
We have a few, thank you.
Community interest?
Welcome to everybody tonight. This is the big weekend, the Kerrville Triathlon. We look forward to this every year. There have to be a lot of people in town, so we encourage everyone to, again, to be patient. We will have some traffic, street closures. We'll post those on the city's website and the Facebook pages. Those start at 6:00 AM, both Saturday and Sunday. On Saturday, they're pretty much done by noon. On Sunday, they're pretty much done by 2:00 PM. So it'll be, traffic may be snarled for a little while in some areas of town, but it clears up pretty quick, and it does bring in a lot of people here. So we look forward to it. Hope everybody can get out and meet some of these triathlon people. Lot of fun. Some of these things we'll go over again in future meetings, because there's a lot going on in October. But first off, Art the Park, that is October 12th, and that's a new event, I believe. And I don't know a lot about it, but when I get done, if you have any questions, Ashley can certainly fill you in on it. Haunted Ghoul Pool is October 26th. That's always a lot of fun, a haunted house out there at the municipal pool. Family Tour is at 5:00 PM, and Scary Tour is at 6:00 PM. So I'm gonna go to 5:00 PM. And then we also have two more events in October. The Mountain Bike Festival, that is October 26th, 27th. Can we know how many people we have for now?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. People, yeah. Lot of fun out there, some great trails. If you want to get information on how to get involved in that or participate in it, go to the Parks and Rec website and sign up for that. And then the big event will be October 31st, Family Fright Night. Always a great event, brings out a lot of people to Louise Hayes Park. So 5:30 PM that begins, and I think there's still openings for sponsors and booths. So if you want to set a booth up out there, also call the Parks and Rec Department. And that's, oh, I'm sorry, I got one more. Chief here? Yes. If you want to give blood this weekend, the Kerrville Fire Department is having a blood drive, and it's at the opposite end of where all the traffic will be. It's at Walmart, and that is from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Always need donors. So keep that in mind if you're out and about and want to give some blood. 9:00 to 3:00 PM. And that's it for me, if y'all have any announcements.
Any items of community interest, council? Okay, thank you, Stuart. Okay, next, we have a Kerrville Kindness Award. And if Ms. Lucy Stebbins will meet me up front here? Okay. The City of Kerrville recognizes Lucy Rose Stebbins with the September 24th, 2024 Kerrville Kindness Award. Tidy High School senior Lucy Rose Stebbins started Project Period as a way to make sure feminine hygiene products were available for Tidy students who might not otherwise have access or funds to purchase them. Since starting Project Period, Lucy has collected around $2,000 worth of products to help keep the school fully stocked for times of need. Lucy also organized more than 20 summer packs to send home with students over the summer. She intends on branching her efforts into Hal Peterson Middle School this year. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to Lucy for her willingness to help her fellow classmates. And if, with your permission, we'd like to get the mayor's signature on this and then send this to you. Would that be all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if, let's get a couple pictures first. Well, Lucy, is there anything that you would like to say? How did you get started doing this?
I noticed a need amongst my classmates and my friends and things like that, just like not having access to products. And then I just decided to start it and slowly start collecting products, talk to my school nurse and things like that. And it's really grown with the help of my community, especially my church community. It's just been really great to have all the involvement.
Well, you are a shining example of what our young people should be doing in their community. Parents, thank you. Grandparents who make emergency trips up to the school, thank you. And your fellow students, thank you. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next, if we have any school administrators or teachers in the room? Okay, the City of Kerrville World Teachers' Day Proclamation. Whereas, future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students. Teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas, teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans, supporting students. And whereas, our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. And whereas, this year's focus is on the theme "Valuing Teacher Voices: Towards a New Social Contract for Education", emphasizing the pivotal role that teachers play in shaping the future of education and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. Now therefore, I, Brenda Hughes, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Kerrville, Texas, join Valuing Teacher Voices and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers' Day and do hereby proclaim October 5th, 2024 as Kerrville Teachers' Day in the City of Kerrville and urge all citizens to join with me on this day in honoring these educators and their contributions to our community in witness whereof, I have hereunto sent my hand and caused the seal of the City of Kerrville to be affixed this 24th day of September, 2024. And if you'll allow me, again, I will get this signed by your mayor and we'll send it to you, if that's okay. All right? You want to get a little pictures, and then I'll let everybody introduce themselves. Here, you guys want to hold that? Here we go. Okay, let's start at the end, and tell us who you are and what your role is in KISD.
Well, first, I want to thank you for having us and recognizing our educators. I am Brent Ringo, the proud superintendent of Kerrville ISD. And professionally, I cannot be more proud because of this community and the support we receive, not just from the city, but from our stakeholders and parents in the community, but selfishly, for my own kids. My own kids get to have educators like this every single day. And so we invited our Teachers of the Year from all levels, ECC, middle school, and high school, just so we could honor them more, because the work they do day in, day out, the care they give our kids when they walk in those classrooms till they leave those classrooms, and the support and love that they see. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Coach Zunker for an introduction.
All right, I'm Reese Zunker. I teach construction, newly the robotics teacher and the boys soccer coach. And again, community, we're building a tiny home at the high school with my construction class. We just got a lot of new robotics things ordered because of our community and the involvement that we have, so.
And how long have you been with the district?
11 years, yes.
Awesome.
Yes.
And Mr. Rink?
18 months.
Okay. I forgot to ask you.
That's okay.
I'm Krista Thorp, and I teach at Hal Peterson Middle School. I teach sixth grade reading language arts. And I've been there for a while. It's been 15-ish years that I've been there, and BT Wilson before that, when it was just sixth grade campus over there. And I run the outdoor ed program at the sixth grade level, which is a very exciting time for sixth graders, and that is next week, which is also very exciting for us to have going on right now that we're looking forward to, where we take all the sixth graders out overnight camping. And they get to know each other from all four of the elementaries coming together and, for the first time, kind of growing those bonds before they set off for their next six years together. And we have lots of community volunteers that come in and volunteer their time and work with the kiddos while we're out there, and it's really awesome. And then we kind of get them set for their middle school, the high school journey from there, so.
Hi, I'm Paige Carlisle. I'm a Head Start teacher, pre-K at ECC in Kerrville. So I have the beginning, I have four-year-olds. I've been there for seven years. We have a really great program. We also have members from the community that come and volunteer at our campus, which is great, because I know they're little and sometimes people are scared, but we love when we have people come. And also with our student population, we have a lot of low-income students. So we've had people from the community donate clothing for some of our kiddos and some of our families, food and different things. So we greatly appreciate that. And at our campus, a lot of people don't know about us, but we're the beginning. So we get a lot of our kiddos and prepare them for kindergartens. So I'm excited to be there and make a difference. So thank you for having me.
Well, thank you for what you do, and thank you for making our school district the best that it is, so. Okay, we are at the visitor-citizens forum. Michelle Lee?
Yes, ma'am, we have one, George Barudy.
Okay.
George Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. So I was debating whether to even come say anything. But so my theme, you're gonna see me a few times tonight, is gonna be really just about giving a perspective that adds a little, I think, truth to what's being put out, but you can argue that. So my beef in the visitors' forum is that lawsuit talking about electioneering and soliciting ordinances. The perspective being put out by the two different sides obviously differ. The city's putting out, basically, you know, most of the ordinances were left in play. Solicitors in particular ordinance, from what I could read from it, was sort of gutted the linchpin of the ordinance, at least as it was presented, with the permitting part. And the interesting part for me personally is what you were left with is two main things. One, the no-soliciting sign being put in front of somebody's house is gonna be upheld or whatever, and the hours, okay? Which is precisely what I suggested you guys do, because it solved your problem without all the extra expense and rigmarole of a permitting process run through the police department. So, you know, in the future, maybe take more consideration to what's being said, as well as putting out the proper sort of perspective on the other ordinance, the electioneering one, again. Best I can tell, you're able to tell people where to put a tent, but you can't keep them from walking around in the parking lot, which ultimately you could have known beforehand and maybe should have. The sign counts. I guess that didn't get considered, but you guys were taking it out, I guess, invariably. But at the end of the day, if you, when you put out the press releases, if you could put out something that really depicts what's happening, it's an ongoing thing, I get that, it's not done. But to say that they were really upheld kind of misses what really happened in those two ordinances. So, thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to pull any items?
Madam Mayor, we do have one citizen who wishes to speak on 4D.
Okay.
Before, in case you want to have him speak before you vote.
Okay. And do you need to read in 4A?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you do that?
Sure. Ordinance number 2024-21, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of an approximate 5.51 acre property known as 2029 Junction Highway, State Highway 27, from a planned development zoning district PDD to a general commercial zoning district C3 and providing other matters linked to the subject. This ordinance was passed unanimously on first reading.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and pull 4D then, so that we can hear the speaker. And then I'll need a motion on the others.
I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda except for 4D.
Second?
Yes, ma'am. I'll start it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, let's go ahead and look at 4D here. And Shelley, do you want to read that in, and then we'll let our speaker speak?
Resolution number 41-2024, a resolution adopting the City of Kerrville's 2025 state legislative priorities for the 89th Texas Legislature. George Barudy?
Okay, same guy, 1616 Glen Road. So I'm not here to suggest that you do or don't adopt this. I mean, I personally have some problems with a few of them. But the main thing is, forgive me, I wasn't able to go to the four o'clock or whatever time you guys do your workshop or whatever, to hear the presentation. But what I, as I'm reading it, so there's, what, you got letters of things that you're generally supporting? Or A and B, A, I don't actually remember what it was. B was essentially talking about, I think, home rule stuff or finances. And it appears that it would be you all supporting legislation that may or may not remove the tax cap? The wording in it makes it so that a lobbyist could be doing that, which is essentially in our name. And I think if you're gonna be doing something like that, it would be nice to tell the public what it is that you're supporting. If there is a way, we've asked this once before, to, when legislation is being supported or opposed, I guess, that we actually find out, you know, publicly, which ones are being done to, you know, spoken about? I'm never really sure if this is, this is, I guess, a question. So is it, is there a specific organization that we're choosing as our proxy? Is that how this works? No? So it's just, we're just signing some sort of group memo, right? Or no? No? Okay, well, then, if it's none of that, then basically, anytime you guys are asked to support something, it'd be nice if publicly we were being told which ones you're supporting or opposing as far as legislation. Because again, I don't think the public is behind removing that tax cap. And the other, the hotel, there was the hotel one, where you want to be able to use hotel-motel funds for something other than what it's already, you know, it's restricted to something in particular. I would think you should tell people that that's what you're doing, because the design of that was to have a churn effect, to use the money to roll back into putting more beds in heads, or heads in beds. And then the unused park thing, you know, being able to sell property outside of that, or, you know, selling parkland that you don't intend to ever use. Again, it'd be nice to know if you're actually supporting legislation doing that. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Hayes, do you want to clarify any of that for us?
Well, the one about municipal revenue, as I said in the presentation, was really every time, there seems to be probably, I don't know, 10, 20 bills filed for more exemptions for property taxes. And, you know, we just want to try to get a handle on that and figure out what the impact here would be locally. What else? The hotel tax, it's all about heads in beds, and we get that, and we're appreciative of that. But if they can remove some of the restrictions, sometimes we want to support that. And then the third one is, we've got a number of what are considered pocket parks, parks, you know, less than a quarter of an acre. And they might essentially be a lot between two other homes, between two homes. And they were mistakenly platted that way. And so instead of going to the expense and the time of putting them up for an election, could we not avail ourselves to exemptions that are already built into law that apply to other cities not our size, which allow them, after public notice, to be able to get rid of those parks, to sell those parks? Because we're not using, other than mowing them once or twice a year, we're not really doing anything.
Right.
So this list is really about as much about topics that we have an interest in, not either pro or con, it's just these are the ones we want to have a finger on as they come up. So we have to decide later whether it was before, either we're in favor of what comes up or what not comes up.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We don't, with the over 6,000 bills that are typically filed at the state, many duplicates, you know, different vehicles from the House to the Senate, we can't keep up. And so we just want to give y'all some broad stroke, you know, areas that, you know, that councils, you know, could be interested in for the betterment of the city, whether that's for, opposed, monitoring, or, you know, we're just looking at, so.
And Councilor, remember, I'll go back to something I said earlier. 8,000 bills are filed, and so we're just trying to get broad strokes about kind of what we're gonna be looking for to, you know, keep our eyes on.
Okay, can I get a motion on 4D?
I would move we approve 4D.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's the end of the consent agenda. We're on to item 5A. Ms. McElhaney, if you'll read it in for us, please.
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance number 2024-24, second reading. An ordinance adopting the annual budget for the City of Kerrville, Texas fiscal year 2025, providing appropriations for each city department and fund, containing a cumulative clause and containing a savings and severability clause. We do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm not gonna go through the entire presentation again. I know we've seen this multiple times, but I do have information. If there's anything that you would like to see specifically. But again, this is second reading regarding the citywide budget, and then there's a very specific motion. One thing I wanted to point out, though, as I'm talking through this, you saw a new item that you haven't seen in the past, which is adoption of a fee schedule by resolution. So I'm gonna talk about that after the fact, but there's some new laws relating to why we have to do it that way. So we'll talk about that after the fact. So it isn't going to be included even in the final budget book, as it always has been, for information, because that's something GFOA requires. And so it'll be there for information, but can be modified through a resolution, which is a little bit different. Also, on policies, same thing. So policies, we're working on them very diligently right now, and so we'll be bringing back to you specific policies for review in consideration as we find necessary changes that need to be made to those. And we will either bring them back to you one at a time or as a packet. We're still working on how that will look. So you can see here the same requirement for two motions, for both the adoption of the budget and then ratifying the vote.
Okay. Any discussion by council? Okay, who's your speaker?
George Barudy.
Listen, what do you think?
All right, George Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. So, yeah, I just end up coming up, budget, budget time. I keep bringing up these topics until somebody raises the courage to address them. But basically, streets and the water fund. Streets in particular, you can, the city knows that we have a street expense, a maintenance expense, that we accrue every year, $5 million. We have data to show that, we paid somebody to give us that estimate, $5 million. You look in your budget on whatever page it is, I think it's 110. But, and you'll see, the street maintenance amount that we're budgeting to put towards that $5 million is 2.3 million. So it's a shortfall. And it's an unreported shortfall, because we're not actually showing the accrual of that expense in our budget. And we've been doing that, we've known this amount since we hired the consultant in 2019 and gave us that assessment, and yet we still don't report it. Basically, it's highlighting a budget imbalance, which somebody will get up and say isn't really true, but that's okay. This is just to inform the public, you can look it up in your own budget. And then the water system, the reuse system, is a mutually exclusive system from the potable and sewer system. And yet, the cost of distributing reuse water is being allocated to customers that don't receive reuse water. In other words, you're having one class of customer subsidize another, which is nothing more than a tax on the water customers, because it does not account, it does not, you can't attribute the cost of the reuse distribution system to the service being provided to the water customer. And this year, and for the next five, I think it's the next four after this one, the reuse debt is close to $2 million per year. So this year alone, there is debt service that this city is paying, that's $2 million, 1.8, I think. And the revenue being received from reuse water is, being budgeted, is less than $200,000. So it's not that you have to get them to pay it all in one year, that would be impossible. But you have to set up a long-term plan by raising those rates. And I understand their contracts, but their contracts cannot be enforced if they're forcing the city to give away something of value. And that's what the reuse system does right now. We are distributing water to customers that are receiving free service. And so you need to, please, look at that, at least the public will know.
Okay, we have two motions.
So I would make a motion to approve the ordinance number 2024 to adopt the city's budget for the fiscal year on the second reading.
It'd be on?
On the second reading.
First?
On second, it's the second reading now. Is that right? It's the second reading. It's the second reading.
Second reading.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
We'll be a roll call vote.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Councilmember Seigerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember, um, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem news?
Yes.
Councilmember McInnes?
Yes.
Okay, now can I have that second motion?
I'll make a motion ratifying the vote to adopt the budget that will require raising more revenue from property taxes than the previous fiscal year.
Okay, do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, on to item 5B.
Ordinance number 2024-23, second reading. Ordinance number 2024-23, second reading, ordinance levying an ad valorem property tax for the use and support of the municipal government for the city of Kerrville, Texas for fiscal year 2025, apportioning each levy for specific purposes and providing when taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent if not paid.
So again, I do have information. If you have specific questions on this, I'm happy to address it. This is not a, this does require a roll call vote, but it's only one motion.
Any discussion? And we'll call for the vote.
We'll need a motion in a second.
Oh, the motion.
Chuck, it's your turn.
My turn.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 2024-23, that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .5595, which is effectively a 2.77% increase in the tax rate.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Councilmember Sigerman? Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hughes?
Yes.
Councilmember McKinney?
Yes.
Okay, let's, on to item 6A, public hearing.
And we do have two citizen speakers signed up, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, so I wanted to run through this just a little bit because this is a little bit of a new process. So again, a new state law that requires us to have a public hearing on the city's building fees, which are included within our fee schedule. So we kind of thought that it was easier just to bring it all at one, keep it together and make it a little bit more consistent. So adoption of the fee schedule, again, the fee schedule will be included in the final budget document for information purposes so that we align with GFOA, but this will be a separate resolution. So the fee schedule that was attached to your packet references a merchant service or credit card fee as TBD. We have since updated that to be 3%. The reason that it was TBD in the proposed budget, we were trying to get the most up-to-date historical data to see what we were actually paying. So this is really designed as a cost recovery, not necessarily as a revenue that will benefit the fund, if that makes sense. And we'll talk about that a little bit. But the fee schedule in front of you that you have at your place today highlights everywhere that it makes reference to this fee. It's surrounded by a box in red so that you can see that change. Other than that, everything is the same as it was originally presented in the proposed fee schedule. So on average, the city pays $20,000 to $25,000 a month in merchant service fees for electronic processing. And so that's fiscal year '24, we expect it to be 245,000, 250,000 with, you can see 160,000 of that just in the water fund. So that's our largest fee. So this is really a cost recovery fee. It is not a surcharge. So it's used expressly to offset fees associated with costs that the city actually incurs. Historically, the city has assumed all of these costs. So really the expense that is budgeted in each fund for this cost is shared by everyone who contributes to that fund, not just those people who are taking advantage of that card service. We know this is the way of the world. Unfortunately, this fee just continues to grow and the expense gets bigger. So we worked with three different merchant service companies over the past couple of months to really make sure that our processes were aligning, how other cities do this, what's allowable, what's not, and really make sure that we have a very consistent process going into the beginning of the year. We've talked to our audit firm about this to make sure that we're being compliant with our processes as far as accounting. So this is likely going to be reported as a revenue and expense, so we'll be able to easily track how much money we're bringing in from that fee compared to what it's actually costing the city and we'll be able to make adjustments as we see fit. So if we're over collecting, then of course we'll come back and, you know, address that. And if we're under collecting, then we can at least give you better data to see it lined up side by side. It's really a common practice in municipalities nationwide. Kerr County has been doing it for a good while now. I've also spoken to them. We probably researched at least a dozen cities and personally talked to six or eight just on their processes and how that works. Their charges range from anywhere from 3% to 4.5%, again, just based on statistical data that we're using, collecting from their customers. And some of them also charge for electronic payments of any kind, which we're not proposing because if, for example, using a bank draft or something like that is a very low cost to the city, it's typically a per item fee, which is very small, as opposed to using a credit card that is, you know, really high, sometimes up to 5%. So happy to walk you through anything that you have questions on relating to that, but just know we've done a lot of homework on it. We've been talking about this for several months, but really wanted to be able to make sure we brought you the best information.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:35. Our first speaker, Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, Kerrville. I'm back on the stormwater fee. When I read these fees, I see there's three categories, residential, $1, multi-unit customer group, $2, and commercial utility, $3. There's nothing in here that says a resident should be charged a dollar on the regular bill and $2 on an irrigation bill. That means we're paying $3 for stormwater, which is the same as a commercial utility, but we're not using any more water than an average household. And I went back and checked my own bills. I'm not using anywhere close to the average water bill of 5,300 gallons a month. And when we build our house, we were encouraged to put in another meter because it would not add to the stress, sorry, allergies, would not add to the stress of the sewer. So we put in the meter and I would like to see that stormwater fee taken off the irrigation meter on a residence or see an adjustment somehow. We're the same as any other residents in the city, except we have two meters. We use no more, no less than other like residences and it's unfair to charge us $2. And when there's a drought and we go into the stage four, we can't even use it. So then we're charged $2 for something we can't use, but we are still paying on the residential. And the reason for that was the irrigation didn't pay for the sewer, but we are paying it on our regular residential bill. They're two separate accounts. And so I would like to know what will be done, corrected. And also, again, with Georgia's street use fee, we're getting awful close to $3 million, three quarters of a million dollars coming out of the water fund. And the water needs for our future for upgrading infrastructure are dramatic. And that money is not being put aside. This account is always referred to as a more delicate compared to the general fund. And if that's the case, I don't, I don't believe we should be taking money out of the water fund for street repair. And on top of that, there's no dedicated fund. If there was an audit, nobody would know how much was taken out of the water fund for particular street projects unless there's a dedicated fund or work orders or something to match up, and that's not there. And as I said, the water study of six years ago was talking about the dramatic needs for our area. With inflation, those numbers are probably going to be blown out of the water. So I would like to see more attention to the water and elimination of the street use fee and the storm use fee for residences that are already paying it. Thank you.
George Rudy.
It's me again. Didn't realize this is a public hearing. So I'm just going to talk about two different ones. The one, back to the water. Just something you guys should be considering, the more reliance we put on base rates to adjust our water revenues, the more directly we're impacting in a negative way the ones using less water. So if we spread, if we use a base rate, we're, this year, I think we're adding $5 a month, maybe, something like that, to the base rate. Doing that basically spreads the cost across to everybody irrespective of how much water they use. That's not the fairest way of doing it and it also does not incentivize, it actually rewards the big water users and penalizes the lower water users. But the other one that I was surprised to see in there is there's a fee, a new fee being proposed to, for someone trying to pull out of the ETJ. If you understand the law about how they go about doing that, that fee is never going to be collected because the way it's set up, the law, is the person will petition the city, not asking permission to be removed, but declaring that they need to be removed. If the city says, you have to pay us a fee, and they say, we don't want to, 45 days goes by, and guess what? They're automatically administratively removed. So that fee is not actually, has no teeth. There's no real benefit to doing it. Not to mention that it's, it flies in the face of the actual logic behind the rule. The reason people are allowed to pull out of the ETJ is because it's regulation without representation, okay? They live outside the city limits. They can't vote for anything. And so they're, but you guys, the city, us, we're regulating them on what subdivision and street, or signs or something. Adding this fee to someone who can't vote for whether this fee should exist or not is kind of perverted. I mean, to be adding more regulation to a population that can't actually speak for themselves in this regard. And like I said, at the end of the day, if you don't respond to their petition, it's going to be administratively approved anyways. So why bother? And it's $500. I know a couple other cities have done this and, but we can do better. We don't need to do that. And so I would urge you to take that one out before someone well-heeled ends up challenging that. Thanks.
Let me speak to that issue and Mr. Rudy brings up a good point and he's right. If we apply the fee and they don't pay the fee, then in 45 days, their property is going to be removed. But what we've seen is landowners want us to go through the process of certifying the information that they've provided to us and they want it to put, they want it put on the agenda for you all to take action on it. And so when we go through that process, it's probably three or four hours of staff time to go through that. And so we just thought, it's one of these undefunded mandates because when they submit this application, we're having to review it. And we just thought, out of a sense of fairness, we ought to apply a fee.
And the proactive side of this, of what we don't know, is should this ever get reverted, which we do anticipate in the next few legislative sessions, where people realize that, hey, water is a big thing and I can't drill a well, and so how do I overcome this? There's more teeth that the city council has at saying, hey, look, we've had this all in play. We disagree with this. There is an administrative cost, but we're also proactively trying to prepare for what's going to happen in the next few legislative sessions.
Might just make one comment if I could.
Yeah, council discussion.
On the base water fee, it's only inflation adjusted. It's not, if you take the rates in '17 or '18 and you just put the inflation factor on it, that's, that's all we do. Costs have gone up and it has to be matched somehow.
Any other discussion?
No, I had a question. So just out of curiosity, and I wouldn't expect that you've spent time doing this, but the increases, do you know approximately how much more that will be to the city over the base that we, you know, the difference?
Are you talking about on the budget side?
On all of them, on all the increases.
On all the increase in fees? Okay, so what we did, and I can speak for the utility side, and I don't believe we had a whole lot of increases on the building, just those couple of new additions. On the utility side, what we look at is what was our cost, let's use meters for example, what was our cost that we were paying at the beginning of last year or even mid-year when we set those fees compared to what we're paying now? And we use like three or four years of data to kind of see what are those increases been over time? And then, you know, if we're doing meter sets, for example, you know, we build in a labor component in those, but there's not a lot of profit there per se. We want to make sure that if we're purchasing these things for use, that we're charging, you know, something close to equal to that and making sure that we're covering our labor. So they're anywhere from 4% to 8% depending on which one of those it is. Now, as far as what that's going to do for us on a revenue side, we didn't do a budgeted increase really big on our taps and things like that because, again, with development, we just don't know. We may have a year when we put in 100 new meters and we may have a year where we put in, you know, 50. So for us to budget an increase based on those increases is kind of not really responsible of us. But we do just make sure that on the cost that the city is going to incur on those things, and only speaking on utilities, of course, that we're at least covering the cost of the purchases and the labor of putting that in the ground. Did that help you or whether, okay?
It did. I mean, you know, I looked at all of them and some of them were a small increase, some of them were 50%.
Yeah, and it depends on like what the part is that we're buying and whether maybe, you know, sometimes we didn't maybe catch an increase or it didn't happen until after the year started and we could see that again. We hope that we're going to see it level, which is kind of what we're seeing now in costs over the past maybe six months, as far as meters and those things, we've kind of seen them level out. But '22 and '23 were pretty rough, pretty rough years.
Yeah, enlightening, huh?
Yes. Unfortunately, they're not going down.
Right.
Did I close the public hearing?
No, ma'am, we haven't yet.
Any more speakers? Then I will close the public hearing at 6:46. Any other council discussion? Then I need a motion.
I would move that we approve resolution number 43-2024.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Item 7A.
Mayor Pro Tim, members of the council. I just wanted to start this off and introduce our new airport manager, Mr. Andrew Munoz, who is right over here. Mr. Munoz comes to us from West Loco, down in the Rio Grande Valley. He was assistant city manager down there in charge of their airport for quite some time. And he was going to be here a few weeks ago and we were going to introduce him in kind of the visitor section. But as it comes to pass, he is going to be here tonight to talk about eminent domain. And so it'd be nice to Andrew on his first meeting. He's been here for five and a half weeks. Just as kind of a refresher, both the city and the county have appropriated in the CIP budgets for the airport, $350,000 each for the potential acquisition of 55 acres to the southeast of the airport. And that property, as you know, is purchased, is undergoing development at this point. And so the airport requires the authority and the approval of both of the owners, that is the city and the county, to exercise any condemnation, eminent domain proceedings along with the state of Texas. And so, as I said, Mr. Munoz jumped into the fire here, right, as it was a very busy time for the airport. And I'll turn it over to him and he can kind of speak to where they're at.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the kind introduction. For the record, Andrew Munoz, aviation director for the Kerrville, Kerr County Airport. Here to talk to you just briefly about the resolution that we're presenting to you tonight. A little brief history, we went through the text dot property acquisition guidelines where we notified the property owner of their rights in property acquisition, their bill of rights. We also submitted to them an appraisal, as well as a review appraisal with text authorization for the acquisition of those approximately 55 acres. We did submit several offers. We went to negotiations for the acquisition of that property. Unfortunately, we were not able to come to terms. We did submit a final letter, a final offer letter. It went unanswered, so by 14 days, it's a rejection letter. So what we did is we went back to the airport board. We had basically two options. Option number one was petitioning the county and the city under their rights of eminent domain condemnation to take the lead for, on behalf of the airport board, for the eminent domain for the acquisition of those 55 acres, in which case that's going to take about three years for us to recover our money. That's about 90% that we would ask for reimbursement. Typically, the process is going to take about Typically, the process is going to take about six to 12 months for the acquisition or the settlement of the acquisition of that property. So we didn't feel that was the best option for either party. So what we want to go is, we want to go with the second option, which was a petition letter to the city and to the county, which is for the Texas Department of Aviation to take over and be the lead agency in the acquisition for eminent domain on behalf of the city, the airport board, and the county. And they would then petition the attorney general's office to be representing them in the settlement offer or any court proceedings that may happen. So that's the option we're going to present to you tonight. If we do reach a settlement in the next 12 months, all we do is we cut a check for 10% of the negotiated price, we do have that in the budget. So we're asking for your authorization to approve the resolution tonight, so that we can begin those proceedings.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion, but if anyone else wants to ask questions, I've got a lot of my answers today, speaking with you and others. Basically, just starting from scratch on Friday is when I started thinking about the proposal. And my only question was, would there be anything at the end, on those 55 acres? Is it just going to be vacant land, stay as is it is, I think is what it says?
It's vacant as it is. Under the guidelines of FAA on our grant assurances, we're required to protect the ends of the runway, the runway protection zones. We're supposed to make those obstruction-free areas. We also have that substantiated by not only our grant assurances, but our land compatibility assurances that we have to abide by as well. So that's the purpose for the acquisition of the property, is for it to create a safe zone at the end of that runway, on the east side of the airport.
Well, I'll make a motion that we have consideration and approve resolution number 44-2024.
One second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, nice to meet you. Okay, on to item 8A, and those are appointments. Okay, so the first one is an appointment of city of Kerrville delegate for the 2024 Texas Municipal League Annual Conference Business Meeting, that's going on in Houston. And if I may, I would like to nominate Delane Sigerman for that, because as I understand it, Sigerman cannot attend that conference, and that just leaves Delane and myself, so I would like to nominate Delane, and I'm asking for a second.
I will second your nomination.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? And that passes. Okay, we have some board appointments also, item 9A. And the first one is the Senior Services Advisory Committee. And who was the liaison for that? Okay, you want to speak on that?
I will.
Okay.
I had a chance to speak to them, councilmember McKinney and myself discussed it, and I want to make the motion to reappoint Nissa Kendall and Karen Maddox, and then appoint Mark Cowan and Joni Martinez.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes. The second appointment is to the zoning board of adjustments, and Mayor Herring and I were the liaison for that. I do not feel the need for a executive session on that item. We are going to nominate Amy Chocley for reappointment to that board. I spoke with both Mayor Herring and Amy, and she's happy to serve again for another term. So I'm going to make that motion that she be reappointed to the zoning board of adjustments, and I need a second. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? And it passes. Okay. If somebody could make a motion for that?
Excuse me, I'll make a motion and we go into executive session under section 551.071.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? And we are adjourned into executive session. Okay, it is 7:58, and I'm gabbling out of executive session and back into the regular session. Do we have anything else to discuss? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make the motion to adjourn the city council meeting of September the 24th at 7:59.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we are.
I was waiting to see if it was going to turn.
Great job.